All right, you're ready, Tim? Great. We will get started. All right, today is Tuesday, June 3, 2025. We are in Town Council chambers for the Town Council meeting. It is now 6:05. We will stand for the Pudge of Legions. All right, moving on to our roll call. See who's here tonight. Councillor Pillsbury.
Present.
Councillor Lawrence.
Here.
Councillor Pilch.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
So glad to be here.
Welcome back. Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Benoit is present. Councillor Egan is excused for the evening for work. All right, our next order of business is to waive reading and accept as printed the May 20, 2025, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on those minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to announcements, we have a couple tonight. GPCOG, which is Greater Portland Council of Governments, is leading a project to improve Route 1 for everyone, whether you walk, bike, drive, or take the bus. Reimagining Route 1 will make the road safer and more welcoming, help towns along the route move forward with improvements, explore better transit options, including rapid transit, support electric vehicle use with new charging spots, encourage housing and mixed-use development near town centers, identify top priority transportation projects and how to fund them. Let's build a better Route 1 together. You can take a survey at the link at GreaterPortlandCOG on Instagram today. Public Safety Officer Derek Bateman graduated from the 18-week, 47th Maine Basic Police Training Program Academy this past weekend. He begins his field training program with Freeport PD this week. We'd like to welcome Derek to the Freeport family. With an uptick in rabid animal reports coming from the midcoast region, it's important to make sure your dogs are up to date with their rabies vaccinations. With that said, if you see our Animal Control Officer, Steve Offewant, around town this week and next week, he's making the efforts to ensure that Freeport citizens are licensing their dogs and providing proof of rabies vaccination. We thank the public for their ongoing cooperation in this community effort. Save the date Wednesday, June 11 at 5:30 PM. Bowdoin College Professor Tess Chocolical will be in conversation with Freeport Tom Whalen at the Freeport Community Library to discuss her most recent publication, A Matter of Complexion: The Life and Fictions of Charles W. Chestnut. She has published widely, she is published widely on 19th Century African American and American Literature. She is the author of Novel Bondage: Slavery, Marriage, and Freedom in 19th Century America, which earned the Robert K. Martin Prize for Best Book on American Literature and is a Must-Read Title by Choice. She is a creator, executive producer, and co-host of the podcast Dead Writers, which takes listeners inside famous American authors' homes. Any other announcements from councillors? All right. Moving on to information exchange, this is a time for folks to share, or councillors to share updates on committees, constituent conversations, and the like.
Last Thursday, Councillor Pilch and I were part of the official kickoff for the partnership planning initiative with MDOT for the particular segment of Route 1 that we discussed that runs from Main Beer Company at the south up to Upper Mass Landing Road to the north. Part of that kickoff was a site walk that took us all the way from Mallet Drive down past Exit 20, and it was great to have the whole team of folks that have pulled together that consultant group, STAN Tech, to really look at a lot of details, intersection by intersection, sidewalk by sidewalk. And I'm particularly pleased, not only with the Freeport team and the consulting team, but our partners at MDOT, who are very interested in looking for alternatives for Freeport's Route 1, which is quite different than other parts of Route 1 in the state. And I think our, it was a really encouraging time to think about some of the things that we have been talking about for several years as part of the Downtown Vision Plan. And Dan, I don't know if you have anything you want to share about that, too?
One thing comes to mind when we talked about surveys earlier, there is a component of the project that involves community input. So we will be reaffirming some of the things that we've already looked at in previous plans, like the Downtown Vision and the Comprehensive Plan. But sooner or later, there will be a few specific options to react to. So what if we did this with Main Street? What if we did that with Main Street? And when we get that far, we're definitely going to reach back out and say, what does everyone think of that? So that's not a decision that we make alone. But that's probably end of the summer.
Yeah. And that public kickoff is happening in just a few weeks with an event at the Performing Arts Center with Jeff Speck, who's going to come and talk to us about the exciting possibilities of what we could be looking at for Main Street.
Anything else on info sharing? All right, so I'll touch base on the item that's on the agenda. So as most of us know, several councillors have heard a few concerns and grievances about the sewer district, largely about transparency and management, and some frustration with interactions. So to be clear, Town Council has no authority or oversight over the district, but there's obviously a strong desire for us to work together collaboratively for the good of the town. And we know that a thriving, well-run sewer district benefits everyone here in Freeport. So I just wanted to provide an update. I know we've been talking about this a little bit, and there's been community input as well, and it's important for councillors to make sure we address that community input in a timely manner. So just kind of giving the opportunity to provide a recap and an update of where we are with these conversations. So we'll just keep it up here in the daze tonight for councillors to discuss. There's no action, no decision-making, just an update in where we're at. So I know November 27, Councillor Pillsbury and the manager met with the general manager and trustee chair, Mike Ashby, who is here tonight, and their advisor, Lenny Blanchett, to sort of start the conversation around some of these concerns, get the dialogue going. That led to the public workshop that we had at Meeting House Arts that was mostly around the project at hand at the time. And then after that, as we had sort of discussed during that workshop, Councillor Pillsbury, myself, Sophie, and their team met to go over some of the remaining questions from the workshop and to provide sort of a summary of, or discuss a summary of some of the concerns we had been hearing. We had scheduled a follow-up conversation in end of May that unfortunately was canceled the day before, but since then, I've been in touch with Chair Ashby, and Sarah and Sophie have been in touch, and we're hoping to continue the conversation to answer some of these community concerns on or around June 18. So that's where we're at right now. Anything else you want to add, Nat?
No, I think it's a great summary to remind us how sort of we got here. And the reason for sort of discussing it tonight is just to make it clear that we are working collaboratively together. We were hopeful that we'd get some information prior to tonight, and some scheduling challenges and work-related issues have popped up. But, you know, there are still legitimate concerns and questions from residents of the town, as well as, you know, I share some of them. I mean, we have to remember that the town is a stakeholder in the district. We're serviced by the district. So we posed a series of questions back to the district around sort of fiscal management and oversight and just a general list of questions. So we hope to get some answers back from that, and I think that'll inform sort of how we collaboratively move together in next steps. But the district's been really good to work with, and we feel like it's still a positive dialogue. So we're hopeful that we'll get resolution on some of the items on the 18th. But this was really just to keep folks appraised of where we're at and let the public know that we are hearing your concerns. We're not just sitting on it, we're not, we're trying to do our due diligence, but sometimes these things take a little bit longer than we'd like.
Anything else from council on information sharing? Or thoughts on the discussion we just proposed? Okay. Moving on then to the Town Manager's Report.
So I have a few things today. The first is, at the last meeting in Other Business, we talked about a temporary skate park, and we have been notified by Toni Whitney, who is the individual that made the initial request, that she has withdrawn that request. So normally, in past years, it has been kind of a request to use town-owned property. This year, it became a little bit more collaborative. So in withdrawing that request, normally we would say, okay, the request is done, the project is dead. However, where it was discussed as kind of a town collaborative project, I just want to make sure that I give council the opportunity to weigh in on that and figure out if you're good with saying she's withdrawn it, and so we're not going to do anything else, or if you'd like staff to take some other action. Like starting to have more neighborhood conversations and moving forward.
Was there a reason for the withdrawal?
I think, yeah, the informal, so I don't know, I didn't see what she put in writing, but informally, I think Toni has a lot of priorities about the economic health of the downtown village, and she has a lot of irons in the fire. And when she prioritizes where to expend her energy, especially given the negative feedback that she had received, not just from the one person who showed up to talk about it last time, but by others, she really didn't feel like this was a productive path forward for her right now. I think I captured that, okay.
Are there any other stakeholders that would be?
She was the one left remaining of the group. She was kind of the spokesperson. So I'm just looking for some guidance.
I have some conversations I'd like to have with community members, but I'm not ready to say that I would suggest staff do one thing or another at this point.
So if we just pause it until council brings it back up? Yeah? Yeah. Okay, just checking.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think one of the things that this was leading towards was, is this a potential, the location we were considering for the temporary park, was a trial in that location going to be helpful to determine its viability as a permanent location? So I think we still, in terms of our collaboration with the other group, we have an obligation to sort of continue to have those conversations, but I don't feel like there's an urgency necessarily to get the temporary park up if we don't actually have a request to do that.
Okay.
I appreciate the request and the withdrawal of the request and how it fits in with our long-term planning around this initiative. I'm just confused as to what's going to happen next if we do drop this. And does that put the rest of the project at significant jeopardy? Because in my head, it was really a, we need to find a location, and the way you do that is you trial something before you commit to sinking a ton of money and cost and effort into putting a permanent location in place. So where does this put us if we're just going to drop the temporary request? I mean, it's June, let's be realistic, that means nothing's going to happen this year. Are we going to ever revisit this? And are we going to then be in a position of, well, the community still is asking us to move forward with a permanent site, and maybe we find a couple of locations that work, and then our next step's going to be, well, you know what we should do? We should trial it, and we should pop it up and see if that works. Like, I just, I just don't want us to make a short-sighted decision here that ultimately puts the pathway to a permanent project if that's what the community wants, with a longer time horizon and more cost and effort, and staff revisiting this and having to refresh themselves and spending more time on it. So I don't know where to go with that, but it is a concern.
So if we didn't have all of that other environment when the request was withdrawn, I would have said, thank you, and I would have come, and I would have said, hey, the request has been withdrawn. So the reason that we're here is I am questioning what the town's role should be at this point. And what I'm hearing, you can tell me if I'm wrong, is some, maybe we need to have a little bit more conversation at municipal facilities about the permanent skate park moving forward and whether a pop-up and having conversations with the neighborhood is the next step. Does that make sense? Okay. I like it when we have actual, like, direction. That's a good thing. The other, council did receive an email from me letting you know that we had a resignation from RSU 5 pursuant to state law. It's council's job to fill vacant RSU positions until the next regular municipal election. The RSU, in their communication with me, both on this one and in prior resignations, they are, they are very happy to have the Town Council pick the person that needs to go in the seat. They don't, they don't have any particular, our process does allow for some kind of give and take. They are quite sure that this is a council role and not a RSU role. And they do not have, so Cheyenne was going to fill until June 11, and they do not have another meeting until August, late in August. So we, when I didn't hear anything from council from that email of stop the bus, communications has created kind of a promotional push on this social media, press releases, website sign that will start rolling out after this meeting to let people know that they have essentially a month to apply, and then it will go to the Appointments Committee and be back here for council to make an appointment no later than their first meeting in August. Is that, so, talk it up.
I just have one quick question. In years past, we had a similar summertime appointment to make, and one of the considerations was that they were going to have, and I think it was an annual strategic retreat, I want to say, the end of August.
Yep, that's August 27, I think. That's what they're asking us to have somebody seated for.
That was my question, thank you.
And the term is not up technically until next year, but we're filling it now.
Yeah, so under, under state law, you only, so essentially, you're substituting your judgment for the judgment of the voters until the next time that the voters would normally be called together to make this choice. So they would do a one-year seat, along with whoever else they have up, fill it, and...
Like a three-month seat.
So you're appointing for like, three months?
Yeah.
Just want to let you know that the Tool Lending Library will be going live on June 9. I'm really excited about that. That was a multi-department effort that I think will work well. I also just want to give a shout out. Today and yesterday were the golden ticket days at the transfer facility to take construction, demolition debris. I think Earl and I have some thoughts on making some improvements to that, both improvements for the community and for staffing and costs moving forward. But yesterday, they had more than 300 people go through, and Earl sat for a while in his office away from the office, which would be his big truck, and counted, it looks like people weren't waiting more than 15 minutes to go through the line. So I think staff has done a really good job, and we pulled some general public work staff over to the transfer facility to help. We were out there earlier today. It's really, I was shocked at how clean and well-organized Josh, for his first year managing the site, is just doing a fabulous job under Earl's tutelage. So really happy. The last item is an issue that I need some guidance from council on. We had a request from the Historical Society, and I am aware that Eric has a bit of a conflict, so he is not going to participate in this discussion. So this is one of those initial discussions that I want to have with the group. Everybody except for Eric got a copy of the memo in the background material with requests. This has to do with Pettingill Road, specifically the very end of Pettingill Road that is currently gated. So the town has a 55, 50-foot fee-owned road travelway there that goes up to the markers, the stone wall, and then turns into a public easement that's 16 feet wide essentially across the next property to the Pettingill Farm property. Back in the 1980s, an agreement was reached between the town and the Historical Society that the Historical Society could put a gate there to keep people from accessing down. There, the town was being protected with the ability to remove that gate at any time. So in the intervening years, there was a degree of maintenance that the town did to the road. Back approximately 12 years ago, the town stopped maintaining the 50-foot section of the road that it had been maintaining, along with four other, three other roads in town. And I need to do some research as to why that occurred. But since 10 to 12 years ago, we, the road has been gated, it has not been maintained, it is used as a travelway for Historical Society or people going to the Historical Society's property to get through. It's been gated. People in their neighborhood are, kind of, have been used to that gate for the last 45 years, does that sound right, 45 years? And so staff had actually met out at the site with Historical Society representatives and people in the neighborhood to talk about kind of what was going on at Pettingill, because I think there are some really great things going on out there, and a clear desire to kind of amplify what is happening out there. And the neighbors who, I think very clearly, were concerned about changing the character of the neighborhood. So there was some conversation back and forth. What the Historical Society is looking for is to, within that 50-foot right-of-way, to kind of change the way that's used, for the town to maintain it, and to put parking, kind of like, open space parking as a trailhead. So my question for you is, first, a request like that would normally go to municipal facilities or complete streets. Both of those are staffed, led, staffed by somebody who has a conflict, so we need to find another avenue for that. And then wanting to make sure that, I do think there are some questions in here that the town needs to get answers to in terms of what is its minimum legal obligation, and I think we need to do what we are minimally obligated to do. Beyond that, does the council want me to prep that discussion to talk about a greater request to expand, which I'm not sure that we would legally be obligated to put parking in? But if you're, if you want me to go in that direction, I can also expand the research and the legal assistance and to get answers on that, as well as in terms of what we can do there. So that's my big question. And I think my concern, and I'm going to speak for Councillor Smith since he has been...
Recused.
Recused, there we go. Is, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is not a favor we're doing, that everything is above board and in public, in the public light. And so normally, I would start these conversations behind the scenes with appropriate councillors. I need you to define who appropriate councillors are going to be for me in this case, and I just need to understand, do you want me to do the minimum, or are you open to entertaining the full request? Do we want to have more conversation about that?
So, the way I understand it, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but it sounds like the Historical Society is interested in expanding access, making it easier to visit the property, not having people park in the ditch on somebody's front lawn in order to visit the property. If we go forward with the request, essentially, we'd be moving the gate back 50 feet or so, and it sounds like the Historical Society has identified some grant funding that would help build the parking, but that it would be on town land or in the town right-of-way.
Yeah, and we would be expanding our maintenance
Right.
of that area. I have some questions about, number one, why 12 years ago, we just stopped, and what our legal obligations are.
Right.
I don't see that we have a legal obligation to put parking in, but if you're, like, in general, you'd be okay with vetting that with neighbors and working and allocating staff time for that discussion, I'm, I will prep that for everybody, but I need a place to ultimately bring that. Is that back to the full council under Other Business? Is that to ad hoc group? Like, how do you want to deal with that?
I think, you know, I think there's also a delineation of what the town's responsible for, and then what could be leveraged to help support grant funding is a question as well. So would we be paying for the parking? I don't think so. I think that would probably be part of the funding opportunity.
Mm-hmm. I think once you pay for it, you maintain it.
Right.
Which I think, which is why that would always become something that would, the council would have to decide and weigh in on.
So you're looking for guidance, bottom line. How, what level are we looking for staff effort?
I'm looking for that if you're prepared to give it at maximum, at minimum. I'm looking for, I've identified that we've got a conflict. Councillor Smith agrees we have a conflict. How can we move this through? Because normally, the behind-the-scenes work that staff would do is usually done in consultation with, on a project of this magnitude, with one or more members of the Town Council. It's in Councillor Smith's district. He is the Chair of Municipal Facilities, and he is the liaison with Complete Streets, and I'm not sure this 100% lives. I think it has to go through Complete Streets at some point, but it seems more like a council project.
Is there a special, Special Projects also has...
He's also on Special Projects.
Councillor Smith, I should have thought of all of this back in January. But is there another way? Could we maybe pull together three councillors, two councillors here? Yep, I went down.
Two councillors would like to just be my technical people on this, that we could get this through and ask questions and vet material. That would be great.
And I was at that original meeting, so I'm happy to volunteer for that as well, if another councillor wants to volunteer to kind of have these conversations with staff, but also importantly, neighborhood.
Yeah, we always make that your responsibility, quite frankly.
Did you tell I was looking at you, Dan?
Very slight raise of the hand, but I'm happy to help.
Okay, great. Did I give you what you need?
So based on this conversation, I'm just going to begin to work on understanding the legal landscape and then work with you and Dan on other questions to get to a good supporting package that we can bring back for discussion.
Yeah, that was going to be the point I wanted to make. Is that anything we recommend, decide, anything would come back to the full council?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep.
So is that just, we're going to figure out...
So is that just, we're going to figure out what our current obligation is and then decide how broad to make the scope of our participation or is it something different than that?
So I think the only thing that would be different beyond that would be, I think if you're, I think it would be great to have counselors that are willing to interface with the neighborhood because I think the neighborhood has some concerns that go beyond kind of the staff level. I think that if council is open to looking at the feasibility of trailhead parking, I'm going to need some technical assistance with that because we have some, I think we have some landscape issue, land, landscape issues.
Land.
Yeah, and also understanding, our ordinance is so helpful for open space parking. It says that the town engineer will provide guidance. So we're going to have to go out and, and get some assistance with that because we don't have a town engineer. But I'm, I'm not hearing people say, we don't want to look at anything, so I'm just going to bring back a technical package for you. And Dan and Joanna will help with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think I just want to, you know, just kind of say this again too, is I would hate to let a grant or a funding opportunity just not be explored. So at minimum, understanding what our involvement would be for supporting a grant.
And what the expense is.
Right. Ongoing, upfront and ongoing. All right, is that it for you, Sophie?
That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, other questions for Sophie? You can scoot back up now. We'll move on to our next order of business, public comment period. This is part one, so it's limited to comments on items that are not on the agenda and it's for folks who are in person only. We ask that you keep your remarks up to three minutes and introduce yourself when you stand at the dais or the podium. Would anyone like to speak for public comment today?
Good evening. My name is Bob Stevens and I live at 50 Moose Crossing. I'm a member of Freeport Climate Action Now and I was waiting to see if there would be someone else reporting that the Freeport Farmer's Market opened on, on Friday. The weather was great. It's wonderful to have it there at Memorial Park. Thank you. We have some very interesting new vendors this year. Someone is making some delicious bagels, for example. There's some hummus that someone certainly has brought a recipe from the Middle East with pita bread to go along and the usual cast of, of, of other vegetables and offerings. So it will be every Friday and we hope that we will have another successful season and be able to also provide an opportunity for people that might be struggling to obtain food. If we can, we unfortunately no longer have the SNAP program that was provided. I think we're trying to figure out some way to gather the same kind of information and make use of some, some, some revenue, some, some funds that could be used for that same purpose. So that's it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I did go and I meant to share that during information sharing. It was wonderful and I felt like I could do all of my grocery shopping there if I needed to. So, well done. Good job.
Hey.
What are the hours? What are the hours on Fridays?
Ten to one.
Ten to one.
Right. Yeah, right. It's a good, good time. It gives time for the vendors to open up and good time for people to be out without taking all of an afternoon. Thanks.
All right, anybody else for public comments? All right. You will close public. All right. Perfect timing.
Do you want to reset the... Hello, my name is Tais. I own Athena's Cantina with my husband down on Route One. For those of you who know me, know my food truck, Freeport Food Truck Battle, so hello again on that. We're still experiencing some delays or communications as far as to rules and regulations of food trucks and where we can be and responses that are done immediate. So this is a correspondence email that I had with our, one of our ordinance zoning guys. This process was started on a Thursday and I didn't get a response until the following week regards to this particular event. And I just wanted to make the council aware that we're still dealing with that food truck issue as far as going places, places that have already been zoned and been gone, going through the process of being approved for food trucks. This particular place was already zoned and ready to allow food trucks in. So the issue was that the correspondence wasn't even done or even, I wasn't even notified that it wasn't able to move forward. So I spent the whole entire weekend kind of just trying to figure out why we didn't get an email or anything of the such. So this email is based on a response of an email that I sent on Tuesday after Memorial Day to follow up. And this is kind of the response that we received without any other, how do we move forward? How do we fix it? How do we change it? Food trucks, as you know, we don't have a seven-day window for applications. We don't. For us, it's a go-go-go. If we get a, a location that we want to be, especially for a food truck owner of myself, who we've been fighting this battle for five years in Freeport, and especially for someone who owns a brick and mortar and someone who holds an yearly license with the, with the town, and with a place that has already been gone through inspection, we should be able to be allowed to go and participate. So it, it slows down the process for us and we don't have that seven-day window. If we're called upon, we, we need to go or else we make a loss in our, how much money we make. So I'm asked here today to ask the council to please review those rules for food trucks. If you hold a Freeport yearly license and the place location is approved, we should be able to get a yes or no within a few hours. In this case, yes, we gave six hours, but the reason was because it was Labor Day weekend. We just kind of like, let's, let's give it a shot. Let's see what we can do. We realized that we needed permission to be in a town property location. We respected that 100%. So we figured, okay, let's try something else. Reached out to May, they allowed us, they were very gracious to let us stay there for the weekend, but we got no response into whether we were allowed or we weren't. And then I was told that unfortunately a six-hour window is too short. I get that, but we don't have a minimum amount of time to do this. There's nothing in the ordinance that states you need to have this within this amount of day, especially for food trucks. So we're just asking for a little bit more clarity and also consideration in our local food trucks and our local brick and mortar businesses that have to do something last minute and also with the, with the respect of the town and the process. We get it. That's why I, I've put bullet points and I responded to some of the key points in this message and I hope that you guys take that into consideration as far as we go. We've been through a lot, as you know, with food trucks for five years now. And we're looking to move a little bit further into different things and, but my hands are tied until the council makes some decision on that.
Yeah, thank you for this and we'll definitely take a look at it. I'll talk to Sophie and, yeah, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments? Okay, so we'll close that piece, moving on to new business. So moving on to item 65-25. This is to consider action relative to adopting the consent agenda. Few items of note, we discussed this last meeting, but Rod Regir has resigned from the ECO Main Board of Directors and has recommended that Sophie is the replacement and also the resignation of Cheyenne Farrell from the RSU Five Board of Directors. So, any discussion? All right. You already know. Council Pilsbury.
It ordered that the June 3, 2025 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moving on now to item 66-25. This is a public hearing for our FY '26 operating capital and TIF budget. Before I open the public hearing, would just give Jessica the ability to give some background.
Yeah, the only background I have is that this is the portion of the budget process where the public gets to come forth and express concerns or things to be considered by council before the budget's adopted, so.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll open the public hearing. So if anybody has any questions or thoughts on the budget, please step up to the podium, introduce yourselves, please. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Bob Lyman. We live up on Beach Hill Road.
And I'm Carol Ann Thorne Lyman. On 32 Beach Hill Road.
A quick story to start. About thirty-five to forty years ago, I was superintendent of the schools here in Freeport and my cross-the-street neighbor was Cedric Libby, who was a longtime Freeporter and constable, had great stories about the old days here in Freeport. One afternoon, I was doing some lawn work and Cedric came across with his cane hobbling up my driveway, waving something at me. It turned out to be his tax bill and saying, "Look what you've done to me." Well, I'm here to pass that along a little bit. We know we're late to the game, but we do have some concerns. The first of the town council's budget guidelines for fiscal year 2026 is to maintain stable residential property tax burden, minimizing increases while balancing quality public services. This seems to be like, to us, like a reasonable guideline, but after we watched our own tax bill increase by 15% in fiscal year 2025, more than triple the increase of any one year in the last 10 years, we have serious concerns. I'm going to share with you just a 10-year history of our personal home taxes to show you how dramatically different that was.
Okay, and while Bob is doing that, we certainly know how much time you put into a budget, the great care you take. Spent 18 years with him doing it. And I've been in situations and organizations where it's very tough. So bottom line is, thank you so much because it does take a great deal of dedication. The thing we're concerned about though is considering that the 2026 budget is coming in with another 7.39% increase. And this again is nearly three times higher than the cost of living increases. So for people on fixed income in particular in the town, this is a huge increase. When people are looking at the COLAR for their social security, that's only going to come to about 2.5 to 3.2% higher between 2024 and 2026. So our question is why a second year with such increases? Why is it coming in so high these last two years? And is there anything you can do to reduce this this coming year? So what we are asking is that you set priorities, that the taxes stay somewhat close to the cost of living increases. We will be paying much closer attention next year. Again, we're sorry, we're kind of at the end of your budget season, but I think that from our experience these two years, and I'm sure there are people in town who are feeling this and people who don't have the means, who are, who are really dependent on the COLAR increases. So appreciate your consideration and we do appreciate what you've done, so I know it's a hard job. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to be clear too that this, for the public hearing, there's, we're not adopting the budget tonight, so we're going to take what we hear. We have a couple of more workshops as a council to incorporate what we hear tonight into the, the final budget we adopt, so thank you. We have one workshop if we choose to set it and being corrected, so we'll discuss. Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you for taking the time to speak. Really appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right, so we will go ahead, we will close the public hearing. Any other thoughts from up here on the dais? Sure.
I, I think council should take that and think about the work that's been done in the budget and if there are areas that you'd like to reevaluate, we should talk about whether or not you want to set a workshop to do that. As I've asked, I would much prefer that we try to hammer that out in workshop as opposed to try to amend the budget orders themselves because those are legally binding orders. The one thing I would say, I, I think council will take this in and when you adopt the budget, either with changes or without changes, you can respond to kind of what you've heard. But the school budget, when you look at the tax bill of the increase this year, 71.5% of your increase is the school budget. There is a referendum on the school budget, so just not telling people to go out and vote against it, that's not at all what I'm saying, but if you want your voice heard, that is another avenue that you can use. So just...
All right, so then we're moving on to item 67-25. This is to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter 11, the building code, to update code references to the recently adopted state code. So before we open the public hearing, we will have Nick on Zoom for background.
Good evening. So a couple of weeks ago, the council decided to, they voted on...
Oh, we've lost you.
Nick, we've lost your audio.
Do we have Tom? No, I think everything looks like you've got everything there. I think... So can I...
I think we'll have Tom on it.
Yeah, can I at least just start to kind of move this along? If you recall, a month ago, we addressed the question of, the state had changed the uniform building code, the main uniform building code, and also adopted new stretch code requirements. The town has, has to follow MUBEC, which is the Unified Building Code. It has the option of adopting the stretch code as the state has defined it or not. You can't do anything, anything in the middle. You can't make your own alternative to that. So at that meeting, oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, maybe it's working. Okay. All right. Can you hear me now?
You're back, yes.
Okay, I don't know what was going on there. Yeah, so a couple of weeks ago, the, the town council made a decision to move forward with the... the stretch energy code, as we discussed. And in that last, just pulling it up now, in that last agenda item, it was also including amending the building codes and the ventilation codes to be brought up to the state minimums, which is, you know, the building, the IBC, IRC, and so on. So all that's tonight is basically just amending the ordinance to be consistent with state rules and keeping the stretch energy code. The only change is we're deleting ASHRAE 90.1 out of the Chapter 11, as the stretch energy code is the energy code that you have to choose. You'll still have to follow 90.1 in commercial buildings and things like that, but basically we're just keeping the state minimum with the stretch energy code that we currently have today.
All right, anything to add?
I think people will probably have questions that Nick can answer.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for this. If anyone would like to speak, please step up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Yep, Andrew Arsenal, Route 1 South. Thanks for having this hearing. I rise to oppose the addition of the stretch energy code. I think the cost of building these days, and the fact that the original building code is pretty good compared to what it used to be years ago. I have concerns about adding more and more and more insulation and sealing these houses too tight. I think it, I knew a guy years ago built a super insulated house, two walls, two-by-fours, plastic in-between, the latest greatest thing, couldn't keep paint on the walls, and there was mold problems. So, it's going to add a lot of money to the cost of a building. I heard estimates the other day, 2,000 to 3,000 foot square house might cost another $20,000 to $30,000. We're trying to add ADUs in town, we're trying to build some other stuff. I just don't think we need to go that far right now with this economy and the fact that we're trying to encourage building in town and to not, you know, we just talked about how much the budget's going up, you know, and how much that's going to add on to the cost, and how much the cost of building materials alone have gone up. And if we want to encourage things in town, I think we really need to fall back on the state minimum and not add this stretch code. And that would be my ask for you to vote against it tonight, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Dan Winship, 16 Purt Road. So, my feelings on this is, it seems to be disenfranchising the young people. You know, the people that ain't making the money to pay this extra amount. Then you go to the part where, okay, people are going to start saying, "Well, to heck with it, I'm going to go with a mobile home." Well, mobile homes devalue property. Town doesn't get the money that they would have gotten if they would have just gone state minimum and said, "Go ahead and build your house." Houses only increase in value. Town gets more money. You know? So personally, I think that we should stick with state minimum and get, allow people to have their dream, because not everybody can afford this. I mean, you, Joanna, alone said, "If your house was a couple thousand more, you wouldn't have been able to do it." Now you're talking $20,000 to $30,000 more. You know, so, I mean, if 2,000 would have broke you, what would 20,000 to 30,000 do to our kids? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hey, guys, Ken Sparta from 23 South Street, and I will just add to this. We're adopting new building codes, they're fantastic codes, and it's already going to cost people a ridiculous amount of money to build a house. I've got a 19-year-old son, I'd like him to stay in town. And we're just making it harder and harder. People will have the opportunity to build to whatever code they want. If they want to stretch, if they want to have a house that meets those stretch codes, they can. But give people the opportunity to stay in Freeport and build the housing that we need. We know we've got a housing shortage, why would we make it harder? You know, you think about a Habitat home, and the great Habitat homes that we've had here in the past. We're not going to be a first choice if we have that stretch code here. I just, I think it would be a mistake to do this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Hi, I'm Mary Davis. I live on 17 Candle Lane, and I also have a daughter that I'd love to stay here. I certainly believe in sustainability for the environment, and I think our early adoption of the initial codes was a good thing, because it helped the houses to be insulated and such. And we were an early adopter for the state. My understanding is with these new stretch codes, that we would be a really early adopter, like one of only the very few towns that are adopting it. And I think what I would encourage us to do, and I'm going to echo the same thing, it's very expensive to build right now, and I don't want to lose the middle homes that we want people to be able to build. And $30,000 on an $800,000 house might be a chunk that people could eat, but $30,000 on a house that's a first-time home buyer is probably going to be pretty hard to eat. So my recommendation is, why don't you incentivize people? If they want to, as Kenny said, if they want to make, meet the stretch codes, maybe give them more lock coverage, find a way to incentivize people to do it versus putting it into the code as mandating it for everyone. I think that gives us the ability to hit our sustainability goals that we want for the environment, but also the sustainability of keeping our community of all ages and all economic profiles. So, I would suggest not going the next step right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm Bob Stevens, still on Moose Crossing. I was a proponent of what took place here, the town council meeting, three weeks or a month ago. I was actually a reluctant supporter. I looked at it and thought, "Oh my God." But I guess I got, and I carried away that we were doing whatever we could do here in Freeport to cut down the use of fossil fuels. And this does it. But since that time, and the other thing we didn't have, it was, we look back when you did adopt the stretch code, that was, then there was that time between 2015 and 2021, where a lot of studies were able to be done that established pretty clearly that the effect was, was worth the cost. And we had information, brought it to the council, and the council agreed. We didn't have time to do that this year. The organization that normally does that kind of analysis is the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory, whose funds have been cut off by DOE, for one thing. And they probably wouldn't have been able to come up with much in that short of a time, anyway. And I think, so, we were rushed here. I think we had to, decided, we had to take some action. And so this is the action that was taken. And I think for all the reasons that others have put forward here today, it's a good reason to step back from this. This is not the only thing that interferes with building in Freeport. But clearly, it's an element, and it's seen as an element, and we don't need to go down that route. I think we've got a good code. With the state code, it has made a lot of improvements, it will continue to make improvements in town, and us fighting the use of fossil fuels. So I sort of apologize, but I wanted to be here tonight and say what I thought after further thinking, and I've let other people know that this is what I might be saying here tonight, other people at EFGAN, and I haven't heard anyone say, "No, Bob, don't do that." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob, that was well said. Thank you.
Hi there, Janice Flynn, Pickin' a Kill Road. I echo what everyone else is saying, I'm opposed to adopting the new one. I think it's putting Freeport at a significant disadvantage in terms of effort and expense for all future projects. All of these things are going to be affected. Also, the visioning that we've done for downtown and the Route 1, all of that is going to end up being way more expensive, and I think more complicated. So I think all this does, it doesn't, it doesn't help Freeport, it becomes a deterrent for all development and all kids that want to come and live here and stay here. I think it's a deterrent, not a help, and I think it's just going to make regulations more expensive and hold people back from coming into town and doing good.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Is there anybody online?
Are people online?
No one wants to speak, okay. All right, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring the conversation up here to the dais. Lots of food for thought up there that I know I've been kind of chewing on myself, pun intended, I guess. And so I guess I'm interested to hear reactions from council. Three weeks later, Councilor Smith.
I just want to clarify and have Nick or Sophie correct me if anything I'm about to say is incorrect, but I just want to clarify that what we're voting on, what the public hearing is on tonight, is not adopting or not adopting the stretch code, because that's a vote that we took several weeks ago, where we advertised a public hearing where we were considering repealing the stretch code. And everyone who showed up at that public hearing was in favor of us keeping the stretch code, including Bob. But also, a number of other energy experts, passive housing experts, energy efficiency experts, all in favor of us of keeping the stretch code that was already there. So one of the concerns I have is, the way that it's being framed, is that we are adding something, which we're not. What is up for a vote tonight is whether we are updating the language that we are statutorily obligated to update to the current main building code. And whether we, if we were to repeal the stretch code, we would have to have, I believe, yet another public hearing where we said out loud that we were considering doing that. So I am certainly one of those people who weighed this, the decision several weeks ago about repealing the stretch code, weighed that very heavily, because, and I walked in really not knowing how I was going to vote, but I was persuaded, not only in the conversations that I had with folks prior to that meeting, but with the folks that testified at that public hearing to keep that stretch code. I'll also say that as it relates to single-family homes, there's no doubt that the stretch code costs more money. But to be clear, if you're planning on heating your home primarily with electricity, well, exclusively with electricity, like heat pumps, the difference we're talking about is 10% more energy efficiency. And yet, with the cost of building right now, that's still a significant increase in terms of, in terms of the money. I would also just say that when we talk about the plans for housing downtown and on Route 1, what we're talking about is multifamily housing, in which case we had a number of people talk to us about the fact that, including affordable housing, building multifamily housing is much more cost-effective to get to these energy goals. You have fewer exterior walls. And most people that we've talked to in terms of developers have said, "It doesn't make any difference what your energy code is, because we're already going to exceed it." And the difference in prices is insignificant to us. The one thing that I will say that I think is controversial, that I don't think most people are going to want to hear, but if we are going to add this much housing to Freeport, it's not going to be single-family homes. The future of housing in Freeport isn't single-family homes. If the comprehensive plan that we're about to adopt says we want to protect the rural character of Freeport, part of protecting the rural character of most of Freeport is not more single-family homes. It's concentrated homes within the downtown and near downtown, in which case, I think that those are the homes that are going to be the more affordable ones, not the single-family. So, I guess one thing is, I still have a question for Sophie about whether or not if what we're voting on today is just updating to the new code, do, if we were going to not adopt the stretch code, would that, is that even an option tonight?
Well, it's not an option tonight. It begins to create a little bit of a logistical and archival nightmare for Chris, if you make a change to an ordinance and then a month later change the same ordinance again, that just, it would flow much better that you either adopt this ordinance that keeps the stretch code, or you don't adopt this ordinance, and we come back to the table with new ordinance language that will look remarkably similar to the ordinance language that we proposed before, that would repeal the stretch code. Understand that because you went through your process of saying, "We're keeping the stretch code," Nick has been enforcing the stretch code starting April 1st, I'm sorry, May 1st. So, I mean, it wasn't May 1st, it was the day that you decided not to repeal it. So, this is something that if you want to repeal it, we would want to get this tabled and call a public hearing and have another public hearing on the old language.
Would it be a table, or would it be a voting?
Vote it down.
Yeah, vote it down. And I just want to kind of encourage councilors, right, so, thank you for clarifying what we're voting on tonight, and, you know, I think there are processes that are very important to be aware of, and also, this is real life, and I think we shouldn't let sort of administrative, sorry, Chris, administrative mazes impact sort of the ability for councilors to learn more information and change their mind, and, which I'm not saying is what you're saying. I know you're not encouraging that.
Well, what I'm saying is that if you voted it down today, the changes that are in here, which is to reflect the 2021 code as opposed to the 2015 code, are truly housekeeping. Nick is obligated to be enforcing the 2021 code because state law has primacy over municipal regulation. The only option that the town has is whether we're going to maintain our stretch that we had before and stretch to something beyond the 2021 code, or if you are going to repeal the stretch code. So by adopting tonight, you'd make no change to the way we're doing business right now.
Right, because our default is we have stretch code in the language, based on the default, pushing what that means.
Yeah, and changing it from '21 to '25 is true housekeeping. So I don't know if you want to, if you want to look at this again without the stretch code language, why we would do housekeeping today and meaningful change later. That's what I mean by the administrative kind of...
But the net result, just to clarify, what we're voting on today is what is currently being enforced.
Absolutely.
And if we vote this up or down, it is still what is going to be...
Enforced until you do something different.
Yes.
I think I got that right, Nick. Yeah, yeah.
So, opening up for the rest of the council, a discussion about this, what we've done.
So I'm really confused.
This is really simple, no, I'm just kidding, it's really not.
Because I thought we adopted the stretch codes a long time ago, and then the state said, "Oh." And we did it because, I'm not sure why, other than it was felt that that's what we needed to do. And then the state came and said, "Oh, wait, we're not using this, we're doing this," which was a lot more, and that's what we adopted three weeks ago.
So what you did three weeks ago is what was before... So, so what you did three weeks ago is, what was before you was the ability to strip out the stretch code and to maintain codes that were substantially similar to what we had already been enforcing. That 2-5 vote that did not enact change kept the stretch code. The stretch code is the new stretch code. So it's not the old one. It's the new stretching further beyond 2021. So at this point, what staff had come back to was, if you're going to keep the stretch code, then we just need to make these tweaks in the references because the state has changed the code, the building code. So it had been based on 2015, now it's based on 2021. So that's what's in front of you. The reason that the stretch code discussion is coming up at this point is because we have people who are saying, "Wait, council, we want you to reconsider the action you took before to keep the stretch code." What I'm saying is, if you're going to reconsider that and you want another bite at the repeal, the, my request is that we not do general housekeeping that has nothing to do with enforcement until you make a final decision so that we simply go from one ordinance to the next ordinance.
So would that be, if we vote, we did this last time where we kind of highlighted each vote and what it meant, right? We kind of got ourselves in like a backwards situation here. So a vote no would basically push this back to us having to discuss maintaining or repealing the stretch code. Because right now, it's, it's a part of our code.
Right.
Doesn't matter what the metrics are or the numbers are, but we just have it in the language that we've adopted it from when we did the first time. So then a yes vote would be, we move forward with stretch code, with the language administrative cleanup that reflects the discussion and the vote we had three weeks, four weeks ago. Does that help?
Yeah. So I would vote no to end what we're doing and do, and, and rediscuss this because I think we adopted it too early. We're a small town. We're competing with all the other towns, and this is going to make it more expensive. It takes away choice. All the things that we shouldn't be doing. It does not make the house any safer. You know, that's what building codes are for, to make them safer. And it possibly makes them less safe. So I think we adopted it too early, and we should go back.
So just sort of a logistical question. So our vote tonight is, do we adopt this yes or no? And given that there's six of us here, we need four people to say yes to adopt it as it is. Anything less than four means we don't adopt it, and we need to bring it back up again.
And then the question I would have for you when we go to bring it back up is, what am I bringing back up?
And I also, I'm sorry, finish your thought.
Go ahead.
I also want to, a really important part for me, and Bob, when he spoke, kind of touched on this, is the, the new codes, there's, there's, was kind of, we need more information. I would like to hear more information on what those, what that actually translates into. But also importantly, we can adopt or repeal the stretch code at any time. Is that correct, Sophie? I know it's a yes or no, you have to either be in or out, but we could revisit this. We could repeal it.
Either way, you could repeal it and bring it back. The one thing I would say is, and maybe Nick should weigh in, but we get permit requests all the time. I think if we were gonna, it would be helpful, we're right in the middle of a building season, if you're going to do something with it, it would be helpful to maybe revisit this.
Next week?
No. Well, I mean, if, if the council here doesn't want to put it in the way it is right now, and you want to talk about repealing the stretch code, and you want to notice that so people on all the sides can be here and talk, then I would suggest you, we do that very quickly. If you want to repeal it now and then talk about bringing it back in, I would suggest that you wait until this construction season is over so that we're not trying to implement two sets of codes in the middle of a construction season. Just, Nick might agree with me. He's, he's really good, but that I think is asking a bit much.
One other question. If, if we repeal this, does it let the permits that's already been gone step back to the?
Nick, we lost your audio again. So we'll, well, that's a good question, I think.
Because we should allow that to happen because.
So Nick, can you text me your answer?
Modern technology. And I think also reiterating again what was said is, if we repeal the stretch code, the standards are basically, we default to the standards that were stretch code, like last, last year. Yeah.
So I'm mindful of what Councilor Smith had said about, when this did come up last time, there were a lot of people who spoke in favor of the new stretch codes. A lot of work had gone into that. A lot of research had gone into that. And we heard some very persuasive commentary. And that was meaningful. And we have a hundred-plus-page climate action plan that says this issue is very important to us as a town. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. I think it's courageous of people to come to the meetings, to step up to the podium, to say what's on their mind. I think it's especially courageous of people to come up to the podium and say, "I've changed my mind," as it is for all of us, to be up here and make our little speeches, and then to come back and say, "Well, maybe, maybe I changed my mind about something." I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think that's courageous. I'm proud of the leadership that we showed when we adopted the stretch code last time. And we were one of a handful of towns that had done, that we weren't the first, but we were one of a handful, where we said, "This is so important to us that we want our buildings to be even better than average in terms of energy efficiency." So that was great. Kudos to us for doing that. This time, we would be the first town, maybe the second by now, but the first town to do it. So that's pretty far out on the leading edge. It shows leadership and environmentalism, but it also shows other towns that, okay, you should all quickly follow behind because look at what Freeport is doing. And I'm sensitive to all the comments I've heard tonight as well that says, "Yeah, we're making housing more expensive." So we're saying, "We want more housing, and we're making housing more expensive." And yes, there may be payback over the long term. The answer to our housing shortage is multifamily housing. And the answer to downtown revitalization is put that multifamily housing downtown. If main housing already requires you to build the stretch code, which is what we heard last time, and if developers are saying, "I don't care what your code says. I'm going to overbuild it anyway. I'm going to build more than the stretch code would require because that's what the market demands," then the market, the multifamily issue is kind of already solved. So adopting or keeping the stretch code is really targeting single-family housing or smaller housing and making it more expensive for them. So I'm going to vote the same way I did last time, which is to say, I don't think we should have a stretch code. And there's a lot of complications around, do we vote yes or no and all that. My suggestion would be, you know, I'm not going to vote for the changes as they're proposed tonight. If there's consensus, I would also suggest maybe we set a public hearing for our very next meeting to consider repeal of the stretch code. And if we do that, hopefully Nick is listening and might advise people who are approaching him for permits to say, "Hey, if you wait two weeks, there's a pretty good chance that the stretch code might be repealed," if that's the will of the council. But that's where I stand.
So Nick has texted, and he says, "If the council repealed the stretch code, even if a permit had been issued, he would allow them to revert and, under the, the change."
I do have one other comment that I do want to make, which is that, I used to live in a 120-year-old house or something. If I was to consider renovating that house, and I was to renovate more than a certain percentage of that house, would I need to bring everything up to the new stretch code because I'm doing a significant renovation? If the answer to that is yes, then I might not do that renovation because it makes it more expensive. So taking a very old house that, the wind blew through the house, and I could see through the floorboards into the basement, so making that a little better would now be off the table because I can't make it, I'll say perfect, but I can't make it up to stretch codes. So we might be shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit by saying, all these renovation projects that people might be doing to make their houses a little bit more efficient aren't going to be done unless you can make them maximally efficient. So another reason for me to vote against it.
This is obviously a hard topic. As I read it, the stretch code really only comes into play for houses that are single-family and rather large. No, it, it does make all houses cost more. I agree with that. But we've heard numbers like $30,000 to $50,000. And my take is 5%, maybe 6% increases would lead to that if your house is worth a million dollars. So my sense is it's more limited than this discussion seems to have recognized. It will cost more for small houses and large houses, but not $30,000 and $50,000 more. And in larger houses, one way to save $50,000 at the rate of $500 a square foot is to reduce the size. And the way of the future, whether we know it or like it, is to reduce our footprint, our impact. And one way to do that is reduce sizes. And I know we all want to hold on to the, the past American dream, but what we need to look forward to is the new American dream, which requires that we reframe our thinking, that we think differently than we have in the past. So it's a hard, hard discussion. And I, I too have children and understand how important it is that they have an opportunity. I think we're going to have to start thinking outside of the box in ways we haven't even conceived of in order to really make that happen. So.
And I think, you know, Dan, thank you for making sure that we're considering, there's been a breadth of input, not just tonight, but across several months. And, you know, what keeps coming to mind for me is, you know, there's, someone we had talked to was like, well, there's other levers we can pull, supporting the stretch code. We can support the stretch code, keep the stretch code, and pull other levers to make housing more affordable and accessible in Freeport. And I, we're, I am very confident we're doing that with the new comprehensive plan and the PPI and everything we're trying to do to streamline our processes. But I don't think we're there quite yet. So that kind of paired with really kind of wanting more information on the ripple effects of the stretch code is, is kind of making me pause to reflect for sure. So.
So it's a complex issue for sure. And no matter which side of the argument you land on, I think it's important to, to note that it's not black and white, right? There's, there's pieces on both sides that we can agree on, and there are parts that we will not agree on. I think one of our jobs up here, and what I would hope that everyone else in the room would do, is try to frame the discussion within the context of what we're going through right now. And there's an economic hardship. We're trying to incentivize housing. This may be a yes or no vote, but it's very much a point-in-time vote in, in terms of how I'm looking at this, right? And I would hope that we'd have the flexibility to be thinking that as circumstances change, that can reframe how we're looking at this and the decisions that we make. And so I think that, for me, it's, it's very much a, a time-sensitive issue, and that's how I'm going to vote. But it doesn't mean that I don't find value on the other side of the argument. I just don't think the timing is right. So I just offer that.
Thank you. And I think too, that's another reason why I keep bringing up, we can do this at any time, right? So if we do vote or move towards repealing stretch code, next year, we can have this conversation again. Because you're so right, it's a point in time. Maybe it's completely different next year and two years, or we have more information. Yeah. Okay. Any comments?
Just further clarification in terms of if, I guess, my frustration with the last meeting was that the way we had put it on the agenda was, we were adopting exactly this, the new building code, and then we were going to consider stretch code, yes or no. And then we were told that we couldn't go yes or no. We had to, it was either, yeah, it was either we repeal it or not. And if we were, so I, I just am trying to avoid confusion the next time around with what, how, if this were going to come back.
So your-
How it's going to come back.
So your charter requires two reads of an ordinance, which means your public hearing, the way you call it, and the, and the information that you put out there has to be adopted on an up or down basis. You can make some non-substantive changes, grammar, you know, something that does not change the, the general concept of the ordinance. So what I really need is, if you vote it down tonight, I need you to clearly tell me what it is that you think a majority of council is going to approve. You've heard the arguments on both sides. You just heard them on two different nights. And then we put that out there, and you vote, hopefully, that one one way.
And I, I just think the part of what's going to be confusing about that is, we're going to hear what a majority of six hears, and we're going to vote on it with seven. And I don't know that that's going to be the same.
I think it's just life. We have to.
Can I, can I make a, a plea? Is it at all possible for us to do an amendment from the floor to say, "Let's strike this sentence out of what we're going to adopt tonight?"
No.
We've been brainstorming over here.
Yeah. So I actually reached out to the town attorney. We actually spent a little bit of money. And what she says is, that is substantially different, that you're not just striking a, a line. It's not just changing it from 30 days to 40 days. It's, it materially changes the.
Okay. I tried.
Yeah, I know. I did too. I tried really hard.
We talked about this last week in preparation as well. So, and also to follow up on the public hearing, we were chatting about that. So again, with the, has to be read twice. So we would have to put it on the agenda to call the public hearing on the 24th, for the public hearing to be on July 1st.
So it's a month before we can-
It'd be the fastest we could. Yeah.
Between now and a month from now, we still have stretch codes, and they're the new stretch codes.
So if you want to do it quicker, you can have a special town council meeting where we would post a calling of a hearing on the 24th because we have an extra week. So if you want to have a special town council meeting with a single item to call a public hearing, that gets us the public hearing on the 24th.
Since many of us may wind up at the Performing Arts Center on June 17th, which is the night of our usual meeting.
Could we just do it a half hour before?
Call a special meeting 15 minutes before that.
Just to call a public hearing.
Just to call a public hearing. Okay. Yep. That works, right, Chris? 15 minutes. So it's a 6 o'clock, so 5:45.
We'll say that this is pending, pending the vote of what we're talking about right now. Because I'd assume the vote, and we're getting ahead of ourselves.
If this is, if this is voted down, does not pass, then we'll, and we'll-
Trigger a special meeting on June 17th.
Can we cut?
Wait, wait, wait. No, it can't be on the 17th. That doesn't give enough time. You really need it next week. Yeah. It needs, it really needs to go next week.
Do it next week?
But we can, if, let's get, if you get this part done, then we can worry about the next part.
All right. So just to clarify, a no vote would then mean we're not adopting the, the administrative cleanup, which then kicks us back to, then what are we doing? Which would be setting a public hearing to discuss moving forward or appealing stretch code? I guess we'd have to give you direction on that. So pause there. Yes is moving forward, keeping stretch code. That's it. All right. Are we clear? All right. So all, all in favor?
Of making the vote.
Wait, wait.
You need to, you need to-
We have to read it first.
You have to put the ordinance on the table. Did you close the public hearing?
She did, yes.
We did close the public hearing, and I have to actually be ordained. Thank you, everybody. Counselor Lawrence? Councilor Lawrence?
Okay. This is sixty-seven twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 11 Building Code to align with the recently adopted State of Maine Building Code updates be adopted.
Second.
All right, now, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is one. Two, all opposed.
Nay.
So it was Smith and Brown?
Smith and Brown.
Can we not adapt being an early adopter? Because look at what this one has done, and I remember a couple of times in the past where we've done it, and we're in the same kind of situation.
Can't promise we won't be early adopters of things.
So Nick has some ideas. He has the idea of which we should ask Amy about, putting three separate ordinance changes. I think what I would do is not try to figure this out right now. I think I have enough, if there, is there agreement that we're going to try to find a time next week where four people can come together and schedule a public hearing? And between now and then, I'll work with Nick and the town attorney. We will see how many options we can put in front of you so we don't walk out without a final, does that, okay?
This is government at work, my friends.
I think just in general, that would be helpful in the future if we had a multi-prong piece, if there was a way, I know it's a lot easier if we condense everything into one agenda item.
Yeah.
But if it results in this, where it takes us then three months to get one thing done, I think it would, as confusing as it is, I'd rather have three different things on the table where we can adopt them or not.
I think that works when there is a decided split in council and people not knowing what they're going to do. I think it can create some confusion with residents, but you know, yeah.
And I also, I just want to also kind of just, maybe on the less efficient side, which is not like me, but I, and I know we want to do this quickly in general because we have building and development really hindering, or hinging on this, but you know, I'm grateful that we've had a little bit more time to think through this and process it, so. All right. Moving on. So this one is item 68-25. This is to consider action relative to engaging a real estate broker or firm to assist the town with disposal of tax-acquired properties. Jessica?
Hi. So yeah, I am before you today to talk about the sale of our tax-acquired property when we get to that point of needing to dispose a property. The state has changed their process that they require for municipalities to dispose of tax-acquired property, and one of the items that we now need to do is to solicit and engage with a broker to list our properties for sale for a period of time. If, and there's a lot of other nuances with it, I can go through it if you would like, but ultimately, we went to RFP looking to see if it was even possible to acquire the services of a brokerage firm to be able to sell this property. And we, so I believe it was about a month ago, a little over a month ago, we went out to RFP. We posted it on our website, as well as sent it to local agents to Freeport with the intent to hopefully secure a local interested agent in selling property within Freeport. We heard back from two firms. We opened those bids, and what is before you tonight is to accept the bid proposed by Balsam Realty LLC with a two percent commission. This is a three-year engagement so that we don't have to try to secure a brokerage firm every year on the off chance that we have tax-acquired property. This will only be if we get to the point where we are no longer engaging with a resident to remain in their property or working with them on payment of the taxes. This would be a pure situation where there's no more communication, and it's time to clean up the books and get a property sold.
Okay.
We, we're not in that position now, right?
Actually, we do have currently, I believe there are seven tax-acquired properties on our books. I am currently working with at least three of them, I believe four. And two of them, I'm still trying to secure contact information on. And one of them was brought to you three years ago now, three or four years ago, asking to dispose, and it was held in the off chance that the town was going to use it or donate it for habitat, for humanity, so that nothing has happened with that property since. So it now falls under this new regulation. So when you asked me that question, I would say we have one on our list that I would actively pursue selling, which is that one from three or four years ago.
Yeah, if, with the Supreme Court case that held that Maine's foreclosure sale process was not-
Not just Maine, but yeah. Not just the state of Maine, but yes.
Minnesota, I think, was, yeah.
I think so.
It made it very clear that we have to be trying to get a more reasonable market value for homes and give the people who didn't pay their tax the balance of the difference. The property that you held now would be subject to having to go get appraisal for fair market value, deducting what the homeowner owed, and sending the rest to the homeowner. It is, I mean, I think that goes usually to municipal facilities before we would put it out to bid, so it doesn't kind of change that process, but there is no more free property.
Yeah, even if at this point it was opted to keep for town use, we would still have to purchase the property net of what's owed to the town and send the property owner the difference, so.
There were only two bids that we got back. Are they comparable in terms of everything but the commission, in terms of the services they'll provide and response and things like that?
For the most part, I would say, for the most part. The other firm was out of Portland. This one was local with a lower commission. Testimonials were great, so yeah, it felt like a better local fit.
Great, thanks.
I just want to reinforce how hard Jessica works to avoid having to put any property in this. And as Sophie mentioned, anything that's even coming close gets reviewed by municipal facilities, but it's amazing in hearing Jessica's work of how often and how regularly she is actively reaching out to folks to try to find a solution that is not foreclosure. And also, I think the issue with this new Supreme Court ruling, or not as new now, but there's really no incentive for the town to acquire the property other than just to get the tax value out. And there's no longer a reason for us to be sitting on property. So this seems to make a lot of sense for the few occasions where it's needed.
Yep, and I would follow that up with, on a historical basis, Freeport has never been of the mindset to acquire properties. My entire time here has been, impressed upon me that historically what council has cared about is just receiving the taxes, which is why I've adopted in my working process such an aggressive communication approach, because that tends to be the overlying intent by council is just to receive the taxes that are due. And you know, it's never been council's priority to take people's property, so, and I assume it's the same with this one, so.
All right, any other questions for Jessica?
Not for Jessica, but for you. I intend to recuse, only because my family has some business going on with Balsam Realty. I'm not in a position to benefit from this at all, but just as an abundance of caution for any perception of conflict, I would recuse. So before you call on me to read it, I just wanted to give you a hand up on that.
Thank you. That was great. All right. Okay, then, Councilor Brown, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that Balsam Realty LLC be awarded the bid to provide brokerage services in relation to Freeport's tax-acquired property for a period of three years with a two percent commission.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's five and one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on now to item 69-25. This is to consider action relative to accepting a community vision implementation work plan, and we have Brett Richardson here to introduce this.
I'm not going to let you hold it this time. Can you get the display going?
Go play on your, play some beginning.
There we go.
Well, we got him set up. I just want to point out, we do have this in our packets, worth looking out and looking at.
Hey, everybody, Brett Richardson, Development Director for the town. And I think this is sort of the third part in a three-part series that we've had together over the last few meetings. So I'm happy to be here tonight to produce or present a community vision implementation work plan, and hopefully get some endorsement or some feedback so we can keep moving forward. So why a plan now? We've talked about it, heard it tonight, actually. There's really strong consensus in the community, comprehensive plan, downtown vision, the Transit Oriented Development Work Group, a lot of consensus on where the town wants to go. An opportunity through a work plan here to align implementation priorities across boards and staff. A lot of the work requires shared priorities and coordinated schedules with council, planning board, and other committees. And so the idea here is to establish some priorities for staff to move forward on good opportunities that are going to land well with everybody that's involved. We're also looking to sequence the activities, put them in the right order so they build on each other, efficiency and impact. And then we also importantly want to send a positive signal out to the market. To build our vision, we're going to need partners, and we want to continue to be in touch with them with good productive activities here at Town Hall. So we talked back in, earlier in May, about infrastructure planning through the Village Corridor Initiative. Just last meeting, we got the path forward on a Transit Oriented Development TIF district. Work begins on that tomorrow, actually. We have a kickoff call with Phil Saucy at Bernstein, so that work's going to be underway. And then tonight, really, the new material is around land use and how that ties in with funding and infrastructure. And after tonight, we're going to be bringing the same plan to the planning board tomorrow night to hopefully get some input there and some shared priorities to move forward on. I'm going to recap the infrastructure and the funding real quick. That photograph there is actually a walk that we did last Thursday, beautiful day, great group with the Village Corridor Initiative team, Stan Tech and Maine DOT. We're looking at the Route One Corridor from roughly Maine Beer Company north through downtown up to Upper Mass Landing Road, including land within a thousand feet of that corridor, looking at development potential and how we could do that in a really high-quality way that supports bike, ped, local microtransit, in a high-functioning Route One Corridor. This is all really aligned with the community vision that we've heard, and an opportunity to really move that forward. Funding, we know we want to grow in the right places, thoughtful way. We want compact development, we're going to need some new infrastructure to serve that. How do we fund it? Last meeting, we talked about Transit Oriented Development TIF district that has a lot of advantages for the town. Most importantly, it can create a dedicated funding stream for established priorities, and that can also enable public-private partnerships to move things forward. The graph on the lower left, if you parse that out, it indicates that the town has had some TIF funding in the past that they've used for priorities like this, that one of those key TIF districts is about to sunset, which means two things. We have a unique opportunity to renew that in a good structure, but also, we're going to need a funding source to not only replace what's about to expire, but to really move forward on that community consensus around infrastructure and needs. So that's moving forward tomorrow. And then tonight, really, we're talking about planning a policy. Comprehensive plan, I think we've all heard, has been found consistent by the state, so a little bit ahead of schedule there, which is very exciting. And really, you know, that's a springboard now to have the community consensus to start to make some of the moves on policy that will unlock the multifamily housing and other needs that we discussed earlier tonight. So enabling flexibility to allow that to happen, and then process improvements so that the process is more predictable and efficient for not only applicants, but also board and staff. We're working at a March 1, 2026 goal for completing this work that I'm about to share with you and put in order for you. And the goal of March 2026 has to do with bringing the infrastructure, the funding, and the land use together in one package. And the funding that March 1 puts us on track to get the TIF districts renewed and to have that funding in place. And if we get the land use done at the same time, we have a nice runway to get projects on board and really implement the vision. So it's about alignment, and that's our goal. Infrastructure, so we're working on the Village Corridor Initiative now, to build out analysis over the next few months. That's going to provide some intel into where good areas are to support compact development. That's going to inform a coordinated development design that looks at sidewalks and other amenities, utilities. How would we support that type of development in a thoughtful way? And then into December, we'll have the Route One Corridor design alternatives. So that'll help us understand costs, trade-offs, improvements. That's underway. Kickoff is on June 17th. I think I've heard it mentioned a couple of times tonight, pretty excited about that. Funding, timeframe is, you know, through now, through roughly August. We're looking at the district, the structure, the strategy, what parcels are in, what parcels are out. How do we maximize the flexibility in the development program that allows the town, you know, the ability to invest in the priorities that are shared, but also evolve over a thirty-year term to make sure that it's relevant and on point? Then that work informs in the fall through roughly the holiday season, the development program. And the development program are the buckets of investment categories that are eligible. So we could have a bucket for sidewalks, a bucket for utilities, a bucket for transit stops. That work defines, you know, so roughly by the holiday season, we'll have a good plan of what parcels are in, what parcels are out, what we want to fund with it, and then that feeds into an application to the state on that timeframe to be completed by March. That brought us up to speed. In order to take advantage of all that, we need to update our zoning. This is nothing new. The only thing that this work plan tonight offers to you all is really an organization about in what order to go about it and what to prioritize. So these planning and policy priorities have been updated through the comprehensive plan, through the housing task force, through the downtown vision, more recently through the Transit Oriented Development Work, the Climate Action Plan, the Active Living Plan. This stuff is all aligned with the work over the last decade or so. Beginning with a first priority of increasing heat, increasing building height on Depot Street. The town, in particular, has prioritized improvements to the downtown zoning over the last five, 10 years. A lot has been done to improve. Parking requirements are lower, the land per dwelling unit is smaller. A lot of great work's been done. The last thing that we need to unlock development down there, really, at this point, is to increase the allowable height. That will help us get to the point where we're really developing that area that every plan has prioritized for the right thing. And it's necessary to move this forward now to meet market demand. Next, we're going to work on updating and streamlining site plan review. So site plan's a big ordinance that Project Review Board uses typically to evaluate projects and how they fit on the land and how much density is allowed there. We can do some process improvements with our new planner, Kyle Drexler. He's got some ideas about how to make that better. Consensus on that, and particularly on the downtown vision, this idea that processes need to be streamlined. Work on overhauling the design review ordinance, it's underway. We've had a consultant in place for a while. The idea is start to bring that forward in a couple of months and fine-tune that heading into the holiday season. Modernized subdivision ordinance, we got some funding from Department of Economic and Community Development through a housing opportunity grant to look at making, again, streamlining processes, more predictability. And then really, like I mentioned before, exciting outcome, the comprehensive plan is sort of poised for adoption now, and that allows the community to really move forward with the basis in law to enact these zoning changes, to move things forward. So once we tie a bow around downtown, get some projects going in our area there, and the comprehensive plan's adopted, the idea then is really to shift our- adopted, the idea then is really to shift our focus to the other growth areas in the Route 1 corridor. The Village Gateway, which is in alignment with the PPI, the Village Corridor Initiative, as well as a little further south on Route 1 South. So that's big opportunities because those ordinances are a little bit older, a little bit dated, and I think anybody who interacts with them finds them to be challenging and prohibitive. So great opportunity there to build on the community consensus. And, you know, I think it's important to note that endorsing this plan and dedicating the necessary resources and initiating the recommended steps sends a clear and concrete signal to potential and future partners that the town is committed to build the community's vision in the downtown Village Gateway and Route 1 South designated growth areas. So with support tonight, with any input, we'll take this to the planning board tomorrow, and hopefully that will give us a clear path to really hit the ground running and send a signal to our partners that they can do the same.
Thank you. I want to applaud a little bit. This is wonderful. I also want to just recognize that you've engaged, I mean, John, who's not here tonight, he was, he gave you input on this, so did the Chair of the Planning Board. So you're making sure it aligns and it works, so thank you. This is what dreams are made of, but that's just my opinion. Any thoughts or questions from the rest of council?
The date that you had circled on the previous slide, the October for adopting the comprehensive plan, knowing that the approval from the state came back months ahead of schedule, what is the possibility of the planning board accelerating their own process to adopt that?
It's a great question. I think there's a commitment at staff to move that forward as rapidly as possible while also being really careful to make sure that at this last stage, there's an opportunity for public input. And so I think there's a commitment to have, to honor, obviously, the law that there's a 30-day public notice for the public hearing, and even to go above and beyond and make sure that that's really kind of pushed out and folks are aware of when that public hearing would occur, to make sure that we can maintain, really, the consensus that we have now. And so I think October, you know, sort of best-case scenario likely with that type of lead time at the planning board, and then it has to go from there to the council and have a couple of meetings there, potentially August, potentially early September. That's the idea there.
If I could specifically ask that same question for, well, it's number seven here. It was number one on your presentation of the height allowance on Depot Street, focus area. That's one we've talked about quite a bit up here and seems ripe for action. Is there a way we can kind of move that one along while we do the comprehensive planning process?
Yes, we're actually looking to take that up immediately, as soon as initial discussion tomorrow with the planning board as part of this work plan, and then to move it forward.
So staff's understanding from conversations with Town Council through the process of working with developers and comp plan kind of chats is that that is a very high priority for council to have the planning board take that up. Doesn't mean that you're telling the planning board they have to do it, but rather the planning board does act as kind of the vetter of land use ordinances and where the lion's share of the public comment to change those ordinances comes from. So based on the conversations that staff has had with council and around council's goals and the goal setting, our plan is to communicate that this is a high priority for the Town Council to look at the height in the Depot Street area, unless we hear otherwise from you, which is why I'm pulling it out now, just to make sure we're on the same page.
I just want to point out one thing that might make people nervous because you're using a four-letter word here. You talk about a plan, but just to kind of put it out in the open, this is like a plan of plans, right? We've done a lot of planning. This is now, let's make it happen. So it's combining the results of the downtown vision plan, the comprehensive plan, the Doggone District, the PPI that's underway now, and you're saying, we're going to do this by this date, we're going to do this by this date. So it says plan, but it's really a lot more than that, is the way I see it. Am I right about that?
100%. And just to make clear, really, what this does, it's not new content, it's not new priorities. It's all stuff that's been talked about and vetted. It's really, we just illustrated it with the comprehensive plan adoption. There's handoffs that have to happen. And, you know, if you're going to pass a baton, the next runner has to be ready to grab that baton. And so what we're looking to do is to set some markers down when items will go to various boards and to understand that if we really want to move this forward, the boards have to be aligned on what those priorities are. This is not, you know, this is really contingent upon a bunch of new proposals not coming in. This is kind of what the capacity of the staff has to execute. And in fact, we'll be coming back quarterly to make updates on where the progress is at, and there may be a point in time where to keep things moving on this timeframe, if we are lucky enough to get six development proposals that Kyle gets busy with, you know, we may need a little bit of support to push this forward. The good news is, is I think we have a really good team on the PPI who's going to be ingrained in this area and be thinking about how it all fits together. We've had some good consultants with the comprehensive plan and the downtown vision. You know, we have folks who are fans of Freeport. So I just want to make clear that this is really about moving things forward, handoff points between boards so we keep things moving, but also that the staff capacity is in place to carry this forward. But part of the request here is that if we know this is the priority, it really allows us to focus on these actions and to understand that some other priorities that bubble up will be priorities, but they may come a few months from now and not an immediate response. So it's a prioritization exercise that's helpful if we want to move this forward and have the funding aligned with the infrastructure, with the land use policy.
Just one comment on the funding and the timing. I know that you said March 2026 for approval of the, I think, state approval for the TIF. I'm sure this is already on your radar, but if that slips at all, then we miss the April 1 deadline for the tax assessments, and then it becomes the following year. So March and April are just kind of close, and knowing that that's well in the future, you might want to build in a little contingency into the plan and try and get that done earlier in case it does slip.
Yep. No, that's, yeah, that's a key anchor of the whole timeframe. And if we start to get in trouble there, which I don't anticipate, but if we do, that will have impacts on how we manage the whole thing. But that's really kind of the benchmark. The good news is, is we have a great team of consultants and staff to get us there.
So, and it goes beyond, just to underscore, it goes beyond not being able to assess for one year. We lose the increment forever. So that's why that date is super important and why we've started the work now to be able to get there.
And have organized yourself very well to make sure we're staying on top of it and that council is reminded of the priorities and support them as best we can. Any other Great. Any other comments, thoughts? Thank you again, Brett. I think this is the direction we should be moving in to get all this in place, and I'm excited to be a part of it. Thank you.
I'm just describing, this is everybody's work coming together. It's fun.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
He really cracks the whip when planning in the town manager's office and our legal advisor. I mean, he does a really good job. We like to try to go off in other directions, and he's constantly bringing us back to the topic. So he does nice work for us.
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly lucky to have you, so thank you. Okay, well, that said, Counselor Pilch, I'll give this one to you. Could you please read the be it ordered?
I'd be happy to. Be it ordered that the community vision implementation work plan be endorsed, and recommendations refer to the planning board for its consideration.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's everybody.
Thank you, Brett.
I wish I had. Okay. Okay, so then item, moving on to our last action item for the night, item, whole executive session, item 70-25. So this is for basically what we had talked about with, we are, council is basically the stand-in for the voting body when we have a resignation and formalizing our policy, because we've had enough of these where we should have a written formal policy adopted. So Counselor Smith, will you please read the be it ordered?
Can I make a comment about this item or not?
Um, not. Let's read the be it ordered, and we can have a very quick comment. Yeah.
Be it ordered that the policy for interim appointments by the Freeport Town Council to the Freeport Sewer District and Regional School Unit Number 5, RSU 5, be adopted.
Second.
All right, if you want to make a quick comment, please feel free.
Reginald Lee's, 17 Cushenbriggs Road. I apologize if I'm getting this all in the wrong order, but I have one request that you consider an amendment to the policy for the Freeport Sewer District, and that is that the person to be appointed on the interim position to be a ratepayer of the sewer, Freeport Sewer District. And the reason I ask, I say that is because I think it's important that there's an alignment of interest between the sewer district and its ratepayers. And this is a way to achieve that in the interim period between the need for the appointment and the general public having the election. We brought this up to the sewer district on a number of occasions, and they didn't adopt it, as you see in front of you. What I did see is the document that's in front of you for approval. And to me, that's not surprising, given the fact that the majority of the board of the Freeport Sewer District are not ratepayers of the Freeport Sewer District. So I think it's just a way of providing guidelines and guardrails for an interim position before the public can make a decision in that regard at the ballot box. So thank you for consideration.
Is, are we able to set limitations or qualifications for either of these positions that are other than the qualifications by those two boards?
So, I mean, technically, the Town Council could decide to do whatever it wanted to do. I guess the question at the end of the day is, is there, if you had somebody who, so if you had a concern or you had a particular interest and you wanted to put a financial person on there or a technical advisor on there, I think you, as a council, should be weighing what you believe the needs are at that time. I'm a little bit nervous about creating rules that bound council in a way that the voters aren't bound. I think to put, if you want to acknowledge that you understand it's important that ratepayers have a voice, I suppose, I just, I am not an advocate ever of limiting council's power to use its discretion that you have right now. That's just not a place I would normally go.
And I just want to call out, too, that I think it's, I'm of the mindset that we align it with the general election requirements anyway. That feels streamlined and fair.
So when the legislature chartered the sewer district through private and special law, there was a whole public process that happened as part of that, and they are the ones that established who the voters of the trustees would be. There are, if we look at the water district, the town gets a voter that can be on that. The town actually pays a pretty sizable fire protection fee to the water district, yet when that was chartered, they made the decision that only voters that were also ratepayers could elect the trustee, at least in one of those. I think it's South Freeport Water District. So there's a process that goes into that. I think that there are some towns that don't have any guidelines. There are some towns that don't put it out to the public. There are some towns that go to a former counselor or a former person that had been on the board before, tap them on the shoulder and say, would you go on it? So I think the decision to vote the whole community was made through a very public process that include, that ended up having to go to the legislature and get adopted. I think if residents in the community want to change that, who can vote on trustees, that you don't need the district to agree with that. You can go through a process to, with your representative, our state representative, to change the charter of the district through private and special law. So I guess I absolutely understand the comment, and I just am a little, like I said, I'm predisposed not to take away those discretionary pieces, because if you put it in here and the perfect person comes up that is the right person at the right time, and it's not in your guidelines, and you do something against your guidelines, although you have the right to do that, that is going to open up and make your whole process, you know, undermine the credibility of your process.
And with the understanding that this person we appoint is only until the next
November.
November. Because of the election. Yeah, no matter their term. So Counselor Pilch, very?
But as part of the policy, number, point four under section B is add a duly notice Town Council Appointments Committee meeting. I mean, I think that offers an opportunity for public comment, and that's essentially what's being asked here, is that the public have a chance to weigh in and say what's important to them and what they feel like is important in an interim position. I think maybe if we just clarify that or have that as part of that, item four, I think that takes care of it, because that's really what's being asked, right? And that still gives us, it gives the Appointments Committee flexibility to weigh all the candidates, all their qualifications, and the inputs that we've received from either the sewer district or RSU 5, as well as the community, and then bring those recommendations with the rationale to us to make a final determination.
Could we put in something that said if all things are being equal, this is a candidate that should be looked at harder than the rest of them? It doesn't tie our hands. It just says, look, if we have...
These are your guidelines. You put whatever you want in them. And, you know, I think just whatever you put there, just be prepared to follow and also to articulate the whys. The more you, the more you bound it, the decision itself, this is really aimed at the process.
And you'd need some sort of scoring rubric if you were going to give priority points or priority consideration to one set of qualifications versus another, and I think that's a whole other can of worms.
I don't know. I get what you're saying, but if you said if you had two equal candidates...
How do you, how do you assess? How do you assess that they're equal? Your opinion might be that they're equal, and my opinion might be that they're vastly unequal.
If we need two accountants and they look the same, you know, I mean...
But you get the point, right?
I do get the point, but I'm saying, so if you, all I'm saying is if you have two candidates, a normal person would say, yeah, they're equal, we'll go with this guy instead of, because you get, how often does that happen? It doesn't happen a lot.
But everyone's interpretation of what's equal is different.
Yeah.
Right? And it's hard to get consensus sometimes.
I would agree that we would have to do some sort of matrix, and that can be something that the Appointments Committee can talk about during this process.
Isn't the kind of solution, though, just to encourage a whole bunch of candidates? Because they'll be, they'll come before the Appointments Committee, who will make the decision.
Yep.
So I'll remember all this. It'll come back.
I have two questions before I make comments on the policy. One, I think for Sophie. It always struck me as odd that I vote for water district trustees and sewer district trustees not being a ratepayer by any one. Could you find out what the feasibility would be of changing the charter so that only ratepayers elect those positions? I don't want to change our policy for all the reasons we've been talking about, but as a future thing.
So I can, I've had conversations about sewer charter.
Okay, so we can catch up on that later.
Yeah. Yeah. I will just say that changing the charter is something that if the sewer district is in alignment with us, is very easy to just either body, both bodies together, make a request to Representative Sax or her successor. And it goes through a public process, and we'd have to show up and tell them why. And if it's reasonable, the legislature probably is going to go with if the council representing the people in the sewer do that. That's for something that's fairly minor, which the, if the sewer district didn't, if, so if the council's like, we want to do it, and the sewer district says, we don't want to do it, then we really have to go back out to the people, because the legislature's looking for an overwhelming, either both of the elected bodies agree, or the community has weighed in. I will say that the, while, as, as a former lead of, manager of both water and sewer, while the ratepayers pay for the daily use of the water in the sewer districts, or there are underlying huge public interest in the water and the sewer. And I think part of the reason why people do that, or take a simple decision like, we want, the community wants to extend sewer mains, but it's going to cost money, and the ratepayers don't want to pay more money, the overwhelming community need might be to extend the rates. So I think that's why, especially in, with sewer, which is not governed by the Public Utilities Commission, you see oftentimes a larger community voice, as opposed to just ratepayers.
Relatedly, I have a septic tank.
Yep.
I have to pay to have that septic tank pumped out, and they collect what's in there, and they bring it to the Freeport Sewer District.
And you pay for that.
Right.
Yep.
So am I an indirect ratepayer? So my last haul was a hundred dollars more than the one before. Is that because the sewer district is setting those rates, and the people who haul have to take it there because I live in Freeport, so I...
So I, I think it's probably a combination of the two things. You know, we've seen the rates slowly kind of creep up, but we also know that the private sector is seeing incredible staffing and whatever. But I think in this particular case, in water, you have the state public, the Public Utilities Commission and the public advocate kind of advocating for the general community voice. And in sewer, you don't, it, it really isn't just all about, it's important, and it's costly to ratepayers, but it's not just about the ratepayers.
So changing the charter for the sewer district, under some circumstances, could involve, as you said, taking it to the people, which is essentially a referendum.
Yeah, and I'm not in any way advocating that, but as, as has been explained to me, not just here, but in prior lives, when it comes to entities chartered by special and private laws, which a lot of these quasi municipal districts are, changes to those private and special laws, if the two governing bodies are in agreement, meaning the council that represents the people, and the district that represents the district and the ratepayers, and hopefully the people, come together and are in agreement, then it becomes kind of a no-brainer. If there isn't agreement, then oftentimes, they kind of will say the tiebreak is a local referendum, or a local pub, something where you can document what the voice of the engaged people are.
And who could vote in that, in that referendum?
Well, a referendum would be everybody. It would be a...
So the town's interest would be represented by such a referendum?
Yes.
Not just the ratepayers?
Yes.
So regarding the policy, I remember sort of what led us to develop the policy to begin with, and I remember that the first three points are really important, right? That we're going to use communication to advertise it, we're going to leave a period of three weeks at least to get people to apply, and that will at least, we may meet or converse with the trustees or directors. So those seem really important to me. My question is more about the Appointments Committee and the process there, especially given the comments we have. Our practice recently has been to say for appointments, we're going to do that in executive session, because we're dealing with people and their reputations and things like that. So a lot of the public process stuff that we've been talking about wouldn't really happen at appointments. So I wonder if we should bring it to council instead of going to appointments first.
So I think that appointments for something like this, which is a different type of position than a planning board position, or whatever, I think it kind of steps outside that a little bit. And I would, while they might hold private, like, they might hold the interview in an executive session, they might, we might not keep the candidates confidential, which we don't now, there's a list. And which then, on these, if we had the opportunity for public comment on that appointments, because it is an interim director position and not a regular committee position, I think you now have the opportunity for the community to know who has applied, and to offer public comment at that period if you want. But I think too, that remember, the appointment comes back to the town council, and if we bring somebody up that's not a ratepayer, then a member of the community can stand up when you're considering it and say, I don't think you should appoint that person because they're not a ratepayer.
Similarly, a few years ago, we had a school board seat to fill, and it was in August, before the strategic retreat, and we didn't have a lot of time, to the point where we had to call a special meeting like on our way to the Bustons Island ferry in order to get it done in time to appoint the person to be there in time for the retreat.
Yep.
So the policy calls for a duly, duly noticed meeting of the Appointments Committee, followed by a duly noticed meeting of the council, which means it's probably a month before we could do anything, once the three-week period has closed. So we're kind of closer to two months to actually get somebody on the board, and during that time, we're without representation.
So I am going to just remind you that the council has been appointing interim directors for at least, I've been a manager for 25 years, so at least 25 years, because that's what the law is, right? So you've been doing it on your own, without a major process. This came about because when you appointed an interim director, that governing body was not pleased with the process and the fact that they didn't get to choose the person.
Which is why we added points one, two, and three.
Which is, exactly. And so if you want to take the rest of it off, I, I mean, you, you can do what you want with this, really. I just, the wheels are not going to come off the bus if you don't put it through today. It's, you know...
I guess that's my question for the council, is do we want to keep the Appointments Committee in there, or as a must-have, or do we change it into a nice-to-have, or do we take it out?
So you're saying the, the alternative would be, the full slate comes to council, and we negotiate up here?
Interview in, I mean, that part of the process? Because hasn't that always been like a subset, like leadership? I'm asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Because I don't remember ever sitting here and having the candidates come and...
Right, yeah, we don't interview them publicly, yeah. So maybe we could, I mean, if that's where you guys want to go, maybe we work on that part of it a little bit?
I mean, I think it's a valuable part of the process, to interview the candidates, right? So I guess it's, where does it land? Does it land here, at a public meeting?
Yeah.
Or does it land at appointments?
Or leadership, if that's what historically it's been, yeah.
Yeah, one, the case that I can remember, we only had one candidate.
Right.
And I think, you know, it was kind of like, hey, we're going to consider it next Tuesday, if you want to talk to the candidate, reach out and call them, see what you think, so that we can consider it next Tuesday. My point is, we were able to do it pretty quickly. So the more steps we add as must-haves, the slower it's going to get.
I know, like, in this point in time, I know the Appointments Committee were very nimble. It's, Chris says we have these applications, and we go, all right, I'll see you on Wednesday.
You should have noticed it, yeah.
Like, it's very, it's very quick, so...
So one option would be, again, whatever you want, but one option would be if there, if you want to have more discussion about this, we have used the ordinance committee for policies before, or guidance before, if you want to ship it there, have conversation, or ship it to the Appointments Committee for them to have conversation and bring it back, we could do that. Once you adopt guidelines like this, staff doesn't really have a choice anymore.
Right.
What do you guys think? As in, not a hell I'm going to die on, I'm finding it a way, I just sort of brought it up as a question.
I, I think it's important to have an application, a public application and interview process. I think it's important to have the public weigh in, as well as the district and the RSU. I don't care if it happens at appointments or here, I just, I think that that should be part of the process. And I think it's consistent with how we've done it in an ad hoc manner.
Yep. And like, my, my gut reaction is doing that process here, where it's like, hello, thank you for your interest in this appointment, let's talk about it on camera, feels...
Our, our appointment meetings, public meetings?
Yeah, we've been doing the interviews in executive session, because we're having sort of these conversations, but...
Yeah, I see. So we could, we could do the same. In other words, executive session, interviews, and then bring it to the dais.
Yeah, and I think that's what this is proposing, as is the policy. So it seems like, I mean, if we want to maybe table it for now, and...
So it kind of felt like we were trying to, like, get into word smithing, or figuring out what we want to do, which is usually something that you would do in a committee forum, whether it's appointments or ordinance. I do not quite feel comfortable to just say, yeah, send it back to staff.
Right.
Because I feel like I really would need a little bit more discussion for that.
I mean, we know how you feel, we know how I feel. What do you think? Because that's going to be the, that's going to be the discussion we're going to have in the next meeting.
Yeah, I know, that's fine.
All right, we'll send it to ordinance.
Yeah, it's, it's policy, I like policy, I don't like writing laws for just...
I guess my point was, we should just decide now.
Like, give Sophie direction.
Yeah, because if you kick it to the next meeting, like, what's the point? We've got the three of us, we're going to be the ones debating it, and we've stated our opinions.
Yeah. So do you have enough to go on to come up with a new draft?
So what I think I'm hearing from the group is to give a little bit more ability to be quicker, and to, to maybe not be quite so decisive, so maybe something like, this can be forward, referred to the Appointments Committee, or that kind of language. Okay, let me, is that... Okay. So I will work on it, and you know what? The ordinance committee meets in, on the 18th, and so it's before the next council meeting, so I'm sure that would probably show up.
So could I make a motion to table item 70-25?
To...
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
June 24th council meeting?
I will second that motion, unless...
Hasn't it, haven't we already read it? And seconded it?
You can still table it, right? Under parliamentary process? It's on the table, and so you're putting it...
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go, who knew?
Are we creating work for ourselves?
I was like, who knew that that would be the line?
I know, I was just like, administrative. Okay, so that completes the action portion of our agenda. So moving on to public comment period, part two, for folks who are online.
So online, we have our local radio provider and the director of communications. So I think we probably aren't going to have any comments, unless Jim has something he'd like to say.
Hi, Jim. Okay, so that moves us on to other business. We had talked about this at our last meeting, about annual goal benchmarks, and also the piece around providing input on FSAB's proposed goals and the Housing Committee recommendations. Does anyone have any, has anyone reviewed the documents and have any thoughts? If not, maybe we will continue this conversation for our next meeting.
I can say that work continues on all of your goals. And if there's feedback you want to give, that's great. I would love to be able to kind of finalize what this is going to be, codify it, so I can get it back out to staff, so they understand what the expectations are. However, whether we do it tonight, or if people don't feel like they've had enough time to really review it, and they would like to do that next time, that's fine too.
The Housing Committee recommendations, how many of those have sort of been incorporated into this plan we just adopted? So that feels sort of like a check.
Yep.
We've done that. So really, it's making sure we understand and agree upon the benchmarks, and give direction to FSAB.
So one of the things I would say, having had the opportunity to talk with staff a little bit about FSAB's recommendations, is they're wanting to tackle open space. That would take a significant amount of staff time and consultant time that we have not budgeted for. So I think that one, we probably would want to hold until, for consideration, when we start the FY '27 budget, and look at where we are with our other priorities. But like, the anti-idling policy, they have a list of ordinances to, for the ordinance committee to take up, they're, I mean, they've got some really good public education ideas.
And so is it just sort of us kind of being like, yes, move forward with your public education?
If you're ready to talk about, FSAB is, is waiting for council.
Yeah.
If you're ready to talk, the one that I would just ask you to please give some consideration to is that open space revision of that work. Ultimately, it will, but there's, there's a lot of work that, that lifts before you get there. And we would, Caroline advises, we would definitely need some outside assistance as well.
I'd be for holding off until we have money to do that. Right now, everyone, we heard this before we got up here, that everything is pretty expensive.
I think I need to refresh myself on their, the public education pieces.
So how about we just go ahead and put this...
So we'll move this forward to the next meeting, I think with a very clear request that we're prepared to give FSAB direction at our next meeting, because I'm very aware of their patience and time, yeah. All right. Well, with that, it is now moving into executive session. Counselor Smith, will you please read the be ordered?
Be it ordered that the town council enter into an executive session pursuant to one MRS Section 405-6D for discussion with staff related to upcoming collective bargaining negotiations with the Freeport Police Benevolent Association.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're...